I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. And also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Ivana Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams is in the building somewhere. Councilwoman Worthy?
Here.
Back.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilson is absent today. Councilwoman Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Cannon to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. I must grace the heavens and the Father, Lord, we come to you today thanking you for everything you've done for us, God, and everything you're going to do for us, God. We ask, Lord, of someone here who don't know you, God, that they'll come and know you, God, in the near future, God. Also, we ask, Lord, to be with this council meeting, God. You take care of us, God, let us always do, and make the right decision for this city, God. We thank you for all the people that's in attendance today, God. We thank you, Lord, that they wanted to come, God, and see how your business of the city was carried on. We love you, God. We thank you for everything. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in the city council meeting held on August the 24th.
Some move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of August the 19th through the 25th.
Some move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
We have a proclamation. This is National Preparedness Month. From the City of Gaston, Alabama, the proclamation. Whereas the National Preparedness Month creates an important opportunity for every resident of Gaston to prepare their homes, businesses, and communities for any type of emergency from national disasters to potential terrorist attack. And whereas investing in the preparedness of ourselves, our families, businesses, and communities can reduce fatalities and economic devastation in our communities, in our nation, and whereas the Gaston, Etowah County Emergency Management Agencies and other federal, state, local, private, and volunteer agencies are working to increase public awareness concerning the importance of preparing for emergencies and persuade individuals to take action. And whereas emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every citizen of Gaston and all citizens are urged to make preparedness a priority by taking four simple steps. One, get an emergency supply kit. Two, make a family emergency plan. Three, be informed about the types of emergencies that can occur in Gaston. And fourth, get involved with local preparedness organizations and efforts. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Sherman Guyton, Mayor of the City of Gaston, hereby proclaim September 2022 as National Preparedness Month and encourage all citizens and businesses to develop their own emergency preparedness plan. Sherman Guyton, Mayor, attested by Ivana Nelson, our City Clerk.
Real quickly, I just want to share with you what the 2022 theme is this year. It is "The Life You've Built Is Worth Protecting. Prepare for disasters to create a lasting legacy for you and your family." So the theme is "A Lasting Legacy." A few things that we're going to do in the month of September, we're going to share different preparedness tips on social media, on our website. Things like making an emergency supply kit, creating a family communications plan, getting involved in your community, whether it be with the CERT team or volunteering with your local EMA, getting to know what hazards are most likely for your community. Finding your safe place. We have shelteretowah.com, of course, where you can go online and view the different tornado shelters that we have in the county. We're going to tell people about Alert Etowah, which is the emergency notification system that we have in Etowah County. So follow along with us on Facebook and Twitter. That's @GECEMA, and we hope that you get a lot out of it. So, thank you.
At this time, I'll call Mrs. Deborah Gaither, who will introduce the special
Good morning. We've had a sister county that wanted to recognize one of our EMA personnel, and I'm proud to introduce to you Chris Tate and then Director Jim Coker from Birmingham-Jefferson Emergency Management Agency.
Good afternoon. I'm Jim Coker. I'm the Director for Jefferson County EMA. This is Chris Tate. We just had a little adventure called the World Games happen in our county, and there were two sides of the World Games. One was the very public side, which was the entertainment side, the sporting events. The other side was the public safety side, and that's why we're here today. We had to operate our Emergency Operations Center for basically two weeks, 24 hours a day. It took about 120 people a day to run 24-hour operations. So we did call on neighboring counties to assist us because we don't have that large a department that we as EMA can support it. In total, we touched 109 different agencies, local, state, and federal. 109 agencies. In the five years that it took us to prepare for this event, and this was the very first SER-1 event, and I'll explain what that is in just a minute, we conducted or hosted over 50 training classes, the majority of which were for public safety, and we believe we trained over 1,600 personnel. So the World Games is gone. The training is still here. The trained personnel are still here. That's something that is very strong to us because we're going to have another tornado. We know that. We live in North Alabama, right? It's going to hit us eventually. So all the people that received the training, they're still here and they're an asset for us. The SER system is from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. Events are rated based on many complex parts, including what are your assets and what is the world's picture at the particular time the event's going on. This was the first ever SER-1 event in the state of Alabama's history. Your personnel were part of a SER-1 event. It's historical. So we're here today to recognize, come around from behind the column. She always do this. She hides behind the column. Not only Director Gaither, but Derek Mummert, who came down and had a very unique opportunity to visit with us and see and live a SER-1 event. He helped us run the SER-1 event. So the letter today is Derek. On behalf of the Jefferson County EMA and the City of Birmingham, I would like to thank you for your participation in the 2022 World Games, held in Birmingham, Alabama, July 7 through the 17th. Your willingness to support and supplement our staff within the Games Operations Center for the first ever SER-1 rated event in Alabama was crucial to our ability to support the World Games Unified Command and their efforts to provide a safe and enjoyable event for both spectators and athletes from around the world. In total, our EOC Games Operations Center was active for over 12 days, 24 hours a day, and supported over 100 local, state, and federal agencies during that timeframe. Your assistance alongside our staff and the EOC management was greatly appreciated. If we can be of service to you and to your team in the future, please don't hesitate to ask. And I will add that Derek, you were there. Deborah, you were there. You're always there in spirit. You're always with us. But this letter is to thank your entire staff because I'm very glad to see that this coincided with your proclamation that you just got. Because preparation never ends at the county level and the city level. It never ends. So Derek, thank you. And Chris is going to give you an opportunity to get your picture made with a set of the medals from the World Games. And if you haven't seen them...
That's awesome.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wow.
Deborah, you need to be in the picture too?
I think I'll get one with the staff.
Okay.
Let me...
Absolutely. And if you might want to show the council members?
Yes. I do want to say that for Derek to be able to leave and do those duties in Jefferson County, he had backup here at home, and they had to do extra while he was away. So I do want the rest of the staff to come up. Jerry Ramsey, Josh Tanner, Brianna Cole, Mark Golden. We've put a camera in his hand again today, and you can see that. But yes, if they will come up and let them have their picture made with the medals also, if you would allow us, thanks.
That's a big deal.
Thank you, Mr. Coker. Thank you. We do know that we have a great EMA staff. They're always ready to tell us what's happening in the world of emergencies and preparedness. And so we want to thank you again and thank you for the recognition that you've given our agency. We will continue with our agenda. Our finished business, we have none today. The chair will call on City Clerk Ivana Nelson for the results of the provisional ballots.
Thank you, Madam President, and we ask for everyone's indulgence today. We have brought down all of the ballot boxes that contained provisional ballots that were cast on Election Day. We have also received the reports from the Etowah County Board of Registars for those provisional votes with the decision which ones are to be counted. So we're going to, I'm going to come down here and we're going to go through each box, retrieve the ballots that are ruled to be counted, and then I'll come back up here and we'll proceed to do that.
This one was another with no provisional. Thank you all for bearing with us through that lengthy process. We're now going to proceed with opening the secrecy ballots and then I will announce each one as she hands it to me, in no particular order. I'll be depending on someone to help me with the tally too, because it's kind of hard to look at them and tally them correctly. Okay, this one, there is one vote for Michael Schell for mayor, one vote for Chris Robinson for District Seven. One vote for Craig Ford for mayor, one vote for Kent Back, District Four. One vote for Robert Avery for mayor, one vote for William P. Avery Jr. for District Three, one vote for Fred Zachary, District Three School Board. One vote for Ron Bunchy Bernard for mayor, one vote for Larry J. Avery Jr. for District Three Council, and one vote for Fred Zachary for School Board District Three. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for William P. Avery Jr. for District Three Council, and one vote for Andre Huff, School Board District Three. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Larry J. Avery Jr., City Council District Three, one vote for Andre Huff, District Three School Board. One vote for Craig Ford for mayor, one vote for Larry J. Avery Jr., City Council District Three, one vote for Z. Andre Huff, School Board District Three. One vote for Craig Ford, Mayor, one vote for William P. Avery Jr., District Three School Board. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for William P. Avery Jr., District Three School Board. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Craig Ford, Mayor, one vote for Kent Back, District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kent Back, District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Kelly Mashen, City Council District Four. Thank you all for bearing with us through that lengthy process. We're now going to proceed with opening the secrecy ballots and then I will announce each one as she hands it to me, in no particular order. I'll be depending on someone to help me with the tally too, because it's kind of hard to look at them and tally them correctly. Okay, this one, there is one vote for Michael Schell for mayor, one vote for Chris Robinson for District Seven. One vote for Craig Ford for mayor, one vote for Kent Back, District Four. One vote for Robert Avery for mayor, one vote for William P. Avery Jr. for District Three, one vote for Fred Zachary, District Three School Board. One vote for Ron Bunchy Bernard for mayor, one vote for Larry J. Avery Jr. for District Three Council, and one vote for Fred Zachary for School Board District Three. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for William P. Avery Jr. for District Three Council, and one vote for Andre Huff, School Board District Three. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Larry J. Avery Jr., City Council District Three, one vote for Andre Huff, District Three School Board. One vote for Craig Ford for mayor, one vote for Larry J. Avery Jr., City Council District Three, one vote for Z. Andre Huff, School Board District Three. One vote for Craig Ford, Mayor, one vote for William P. Avery Jr., District Three City Council, one vote for Z. Andre Huff, School Board District Three. One vote for Michael Schell, Mayor, one vote for Larry J. Avery Jr., City Council District Three, one vote for Fred Zachary, School Board District Three. One vote for Thomas Worthy, Mayor, one vote for Kent Back, City Council, District Four. One vote for Thomas Worthy, Mayor, one vote for Steve Smith, City Council District Two. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Steve Smith, City Council District Two. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Steve Smith, District Two, City Council. One vote for Michael Schell, Mayor, one vote for Amy Lipscomb, City Council District Two. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Steve Smith, City Council District Two. One vote for John Jacobs, Mayor, one vote for Steve Smith, City Council District Two. One vote Thomas Worthy, Mayor, one vote Steve Smith, City Council District Two. One vote for Thomas Worthy, Mayor, one vote for Tanya Lynn Latham, City Council District One. One vote for Michael Schell, Mayor, one vote for Tanya Lynn Latham, City Council District One. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Tanya Lynn Latham, City Council District One. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Jason Wilson, City Council District Five, one vote for Bonnie Yarnell, School Board District Five. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Tanya Lynn Latham, City Council District One. One vote for Craig Ford, Mayor, one vote for Kent Back, City Council District Four. One vote for Craig Ford, Mayor, one vote for Carrie Mashin, City Council District Four. One vote for Craig Ford, Mayor, one vote for Kent Back, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Kent Back, City Council District Four. One vote for Craig Ford, Mayor, one vote for Carrie Mashin, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Carrie Mashin, City Council District Four. One vote for Craig Ford, Mayor, one vote for Luther D. Abel, City Council District Four. One vote for Robert Avery, Mayor, one vote for Billy F. Billingsley Sr., City Council District Five, one vote for Mark Dayton, School Board District Five. One vote for Craig Ford, Mayor, one vote for Billy F. Billingsley Sr., City Council District Five, one vote for Mark Dayton, School Board District Five. One vote for Craig Ford, Mayor, one vote for Linda Riggins Aaron, City Council District Five, one vote for Mark Dayton, School Board District Five. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Jason Wilson, City Council District Five, one vote for Mark Dayton, School Board District Five. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Carrie Mashin, City Council District Four. One vote for Heather Brothers New, Mayor, one vote for Carrie Mashin, City Council District Four. One vote for Craig Ford, Mayor, one vote for Dixie Monatra, City Council District Six. One vote for Craig Ford, Mayor, one vote for Dixie Monatra, City Council District Six. One vote for Michael Schell, Mayor, one vote for Renee Stokes Reeves, City Council District Six. One vote for Thomas Worthy, Mayor, one vote for Linda Riggins Aaron, City Council District Five, one vote for Mark Dayton, School Board District Five. Last but not least, one vote for Craig Ford, Mayor, one vote for Billy F. Billingsley Sr., City Council District Five, one vote for Bonnie Yarnell, School Board District Five. Who's a good mathematician who has the figures? Let me say, if we inadvertently announce an incorrect figure doing this in haste, it will be, we will recheck this and recount it to go on the final copy of the resolution once it's finalized by the council. All righty, we'll start with the mayor's race. Robert Avery, did anyone record the number of provisionals received by Robert Avery?
Nine.
Nine, okay. We have what?
I'm sorry, the number is eight.
Oh, she had eight.
It's eight.
It's eight, okay. Eight votes were credited for Robert Avery. Ron Bunchy Bernard?
One.
One vote was credited to him. I'm looking at my assistants down here as well, too. We'll have more than one head. Craig Ford for mayor?
Thirteen.
Thirteen?
Thirteen.
Okay. John Jacobs?
One.
One. Heather Brothers New?
Seven.
Seven? All right, I'm getting a head nod. All right, Michael Schell?
Five.
Five. Okay. Thomas Worthy?
Five.
Five.
He's wrong on that, that was a lot more.
Okay. All right, we'll move then to the race for District One Councilmember, Shari Bostic?
Zero.
Zero, okay. Tanya Lynn Latham?
Four.
Four. Cynthia W. Toles?
Zero.
Okay. City Council District Two, David Devine Senior?
Zero.
Ashton Gray?
Zero.
Amy Lipscomb?
One.
One. Steve Smith?
Six.
Six. Six. David Woodard? Okay, City Council District 3, Larry J. Avery Jr.? Okay, they?
I had four.
We had four.
Okay. We're going to count four. As I say, we will double check to make sure these figures are correct. William P. Avery Jr.?
Three.
Three. Okay. Denisha Ann Getal?
Zero.
Okay. City Council District 4, Luther D. Abel?
One.
Kent Back?
Five.
Carrie Mashin? City Council District 5, Linda Riggins Aaron?
Two.
Billy F. Billingsley Sr.? Jason Wilson? City Council District 6, Ricky Leath?
Zero.
Benji Mashburn?
Zero.
Dixie Manatra?
Two.
Philip Phil Morgan?
Zero.
Joshua F. Partey?
Zero.
Renee Stokes Reeves?
One.
City Council District 7, Sinjin Horn?
Zero.
James Jimmy Kelton?
Zero.
Ben Reed?
Zero.
Chris Robinson? School Board District 3, Z. Andre Huff?
Four.
And Fred Zachary? School Board District 5, Mark Dayton? Bonnie Yarnell?
Two.
Yes, we will have the resolution available. The numbers are the same as what was posted on the website the night of the election, not aware of any changes that were made. In the process of telefoning the numbers in, one voting box sent a correction in, but that was indicated on the city's website as well. We corrected that total on election night. Unless somebody wants to hear all the numbers at this point, I think we can proceed, and then we'll make the resolution available for anyone who wants to view it after the meeting. I wrote the numbers in on mine.
Resolving, certifying the election results. The following persons are declared elected. Tanya Latham, District 1, Steve Smith, District 2. No candidates receive a majority of the votes for mayor or council members in District 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7. And a runoff election will be held on September 20th for the following races. Craig Ford and Heather Brother New for mayor, Larry J. Avery Jr. and Denisha Ann Getal for District 3, Kent Back and Carrie Mashin for council member District 4, Billy F. Billingsley Sr. and Jason Wilson for council member District 5, Dixie Manatra and Renee Stokes Reeves for council member District 6, and Ben Reed and Chris Robinson for council member District 7. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution declaring municipal election results, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is new business, and we have none in the department reports. We now have remarks by the council. Councilman Reed?
Yes, now I just, I wanted to remember Curly DeRamos, who died this morning. I just want him and his family to know that we're with him. He's one of our good friends here.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes, I'd just like for everybody to pray for Jack Patton. He's been in Wana Park probably for eighty-something years, and he was in a car wreck just a few minutes ago. I just got the text. Everybody pray for him, please.
Councilman Back?
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to thank everybody for voting in this election, and remember to vote September 20th. That'll be Tuesday, September 20th. Thank you.
Councilman Worthy?
Nothing.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Do want to likewise send our prayers and thoughts and condolences out to the DeRamos family, definitely praying for them during this very difficult time. Want to take the opportunity also to thank Aldat for the community involvement meeting that took place on last Thursday. There was very, very good turnout. It wasn't just passive turnout, it was very good turnout, and I think very eye-opening for a number of people. And, you know, again, I think we're pretty much beyond the point of no return as it relates to that project, and people are now going to be receiving notices from Aldat and the state relative to property acquisition negotiations, or I shouldn't say negotiations, because there won't be any. But definitely property acquisitions along the right of way. So still stay tuned if your property was impacted. Thank you, Madam President.
If there's nothing else, I call for a motion to adjourn.